Everybody ready?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I recall, maybe some of you were here last meeting or may have talked to one of us, but she goes into every meeting in eight years. And I'm there for ten, and I never got to take her. So tonight, I'm calling this meeting to order.
And with that, if you'd please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to defy what the United States of America and into the Republic, where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all so much for being here this evening. This is a really exciting meeting, so welcome everyone and thanks for being here. Before we move into our moment of silence, I would like to make special mention and actually dedicate this moment of silence to or in memory of Ray Ben Sturza. Mayor Sturza passed away on November 25th and served not only as mayor of Kettle Hill Hills, but as the planning, or town planner, and the director of our, the first director of our towning, or our town planning department years ago. So as we move into this moment of silence, special reverence for Ray. Okay, next up on the agenda is the agenda approval.
Mayor, I'm going to be approving the agenda as presented.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, next we will move on. We have two public hearings this evening specifically set aside for recommendations related to local historic designations. As we do with our public hearings, I will turn this over to our chairman attorney to conduct the public hearings this evening.
It will be two public hearings conducted this evening by the KDH Board of Commissioners. The following rules shall apply to these hearings. Public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will be recording all oral comments in a concise and brief manner, and written statements shall be recorded in a similar manner, and made part of the record of the hearing, but also shall be submitted and pulled to the town clerk. If speaking tonight, please limit your comments to issues and matters relevant to the hearings at hand. A five-minute exception will be made if there's a spokesperson for a group; otherwise, the time limit will be three minutes. When you come up, please identify yourself and state your address, so the town clerk can report who you are and where you're from. All right, the first public hearing will please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kettle Hill Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: an historic landmark designation, property being at 202 East Arch Street, known as the Brightfield Jensen Cottage. I believe we have anybody signed up, so if there's anybody that would like to speak just for now, please come up and do it now.
Okay, any discussion on the board? A motion would be in order?
I make a motion. We recommend approval of the historic designation for the Brightfield Jensen Cottage as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Second public hearing now will come to order, and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kettle Hill Hills Board of Commissioners to consider an historic landmark designation at 2043 Norfolk Street, being known as the Savage Cottage. Again, there's nobody who's signed up to speak, but if anybody would like to speak from the floor, please come do so now.
Discussion for the board?
Looks good.
Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve historic landmark designation for the Savage Cottage at 2043 Norfolk Street.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and we really appreciate these families and being part of this. This is a great recognition and history to continue legacy in our town, so thank you. All right, next on our agenda is our first opportunity, or the first time set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board on any topic of their choosing to do so. We do ask if you're speaking as an individual, if you would please limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you could keep those comments to five minutes just so we have time for anyone who wishes to speak to have the opportunity to do so. We'll call you up, you just raise your hand, and then when you approach the podium, Sue's already waiting, but when you approach the podium, if you would just identify yourself by name and address, please. So welcome, Sue.
Hi, I'm Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, speaking as an individual. I know you don't want everybody in this room standing up to say thanks, but I have to. Skip, we've worked together for years, it's been my pleasure. I know we'll continue to do that, it's been great. Mike, the thing about you leaving is that we're pretty good friends now, you and Sue and I, so I expect to see a lot of you. And Mayor, I called you the Renaissance Woman, and I think that it still fits. It's a definition of all the things that you are. So thank you for all the support that you've given to the Community Apairance Commission. You work for this town, and I just had to get up here and say a special thanks to you, and I really look forward to working with our new folks too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Yes, a hand in the back. Such a full house, it's hard to see everybody. It's great, welcome.
My name is Martha Vaughn. I live at 1217 C South Virginia Dare Trail, and I'm here on behalf of the group of Kill Double Hills Against Many Hotels. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, Mayor Davies, and the outgoing commissioners for working with us in the past few months, and we look forward to working with Mayor Spruill and the new commissioners. So thank you for that. I just would like to say, we did do a lot of good work, I think, in the last couple of weeks, months, and we asked that you please take immediate consideration in keeping this going, forming the small groups we talked about while people are still involved and interested and have ideas. We don't want it to come up just at every monthly meeting. We'd like to be working in between and on the sidelines as much as we can. So whatever we can do to come up with a third designation is our goal, and we look forward to working with each and every one of you in any way we can. So thank you again for your service, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you for your interest and your support.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Other hands? Okay. Well, thank you, there is another time set aside later on the agenda if you do choose to speak. All right, we will move on to introductions and presentations, and we have a presentation on the Dare County Motorcycle Toy Run. Welcome. Terry's gonna co-present with you or not?
I wish he would, but he's gonna let me sink or swim, I have a feeling. My name is Terry Grubbs, I'm actually the other Terry in the group, and I am here on behalf of the Dare County Motor Sports Charity Group. I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and give you a little information about our nonprofit organization. This is our fourth year of our toy run to benefit underprivileged children in Dare County, and I must say that we have an awesome county. But we could never accomplish what we do without the support of Vertigo Tattoo in Mans Harbor, who donates their property every year multiple times for us. We have another group that has become a large supporter, that is the Cat Life Jeepers, and they are anything and everything that we need. I can't even start to mention how they help us. Along with these huge supporters, we also have the Johnny Waters Band, Local Motorcycle Clubs, the Dare County Sheriff's Department, our garage band charities, Outer Banks Riding Custom Festival, and local municipalities. With that said, Cameron, can I show the board and audience our video? Well, as you can see, we have a lot of fun doing this, and I want to thank you, Mayor Davies, for speaking on our behalf during our run also. Thank you so much. So I'm gonna give you just a little bit of information. We began this in 2016, and the first year we were able to exceed our expectations, we raised $14,000 and were able to help 400 children with Christmas. The second year, it almost doubled, it was 25,000, we were able to help, you know, 534 children. The third year, we rose to 2,000, which again, we just kept growing, and we were able to reach 600 children. This year, we're projecting our funds to finish around 42,000. We plan to reach 1,000 children. That would be, if we reach our goal, would be over a 300% increase from the year before. So Cindy came very apparent that we not only needed to provide memories at Christmas time for our children, but we also needed to invest in their future. So we started three scholarship funds last year that would award one student in each of our three main areas, being Dare County Mainland, Manny, or well, Manio Mainland, the Northern Beaches, and Hatters Island. We were able to donate each one student, which was very hard for us, from each category $500. This year, we're able to raise that to 1,000, so we're very excited about that. We also have other events, the Outer Banks Bike Rally, the Manio Christmas Parade, St. Patrick's Day Parade, just so that y'all know. And this year, a bunch of our folks from Dare County went to the Fifth Annual Coastal Virginia Auto Show, had a great showing representing Dare County, that we brought home five of six awards, which was really good. And we would not have been the success each year that we have been without the support of our local law enforcement. You don't know how much we really appreciate the fact that we don't have to stop at every crossway, by every crosswalk, when you have 100 to 160 bikes and 30 Jeeps roughly following its intersections and so on, it is really appreciated. So with that said, can I, please, Steve? Oh, no. Yeah, coughing attack. It's my pleasure to present you with this plaque of our appreciation for your, hopefully your continued support.
You would have. We thank you for what you did.
Thank you, Terry. That's absolutely wonderful. Great, and thank you, Terry.
Mayor, I've asked the mayor a couple times if she'd ride on the back of my bike. Maybe now that, you know, this, no.
Happy new mayor coming!
I'm not gonna be sitting here looking forward to that. I'm here to get you in the toy run.
Maybe so.
Yeah, we appreciate everybody's support for that. I mean, we gotta bring it.
Awesome.
I think I'm gonna bring it up.
No, we did have, was it two years ago, Michael, may remember, we were trying to, each year during Bike Week, we would do a welcome message, if that's part of the program. And so one year, Michael thought we'd be really creative, and hey, if you need to have the mayor on a motorcycle. So they arranged for, I think it was Detective Drummond's motorcycle, and we met over, but it was just a photo. I didn't invite him. So it was kinda cool. Anyway, all right, well, that was wonderful, thank you so much. We have one item this evening under Old Business, it's the Baumstreet Sidewalk Centennial Path Phase Two Grant Award. And if you recall, there's, the board provided authorization for its staff to submit an application to the Tourism Board for funding to construct a sidewalk, sidewalk along Baumstreet to connect the existing sidewalks and pathways along Veterans Drive and Mustang. We requested 91,000, which was 75% of the project's cost. However, as Mike indicated at our last meeting, the grant award process was really competitive, they had lots of requests, so we did receive a reward in the amount of 55,168, which is 45% of the cost. Funds for the remaining balance are available in our Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund. So the request tonight is for us to execute a contract for the grant funding with the Tourism Board and authorize the additional funding from the Sidewalk Capital Reserve Fund.
Yeah, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we, I'm the chairman of the Grants Committee at the Tourism Board, and we had about $860,000, I think, in our grant fund for that grant period. There's two periods a year where you get to apply for grants. And there were so many applicants, and they were asking so much, as a matter of fact, three grants alone exceeded that 800,000 out of about 17 or 18 grants. So we really had to spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to work at all that, and we ended up just doing a percentage across the board and just used, rather than going into borrowing funds from the, our general fund, we just decided to just split it up as best we could so everybody can get something, as opposed to some people getting nothing and some people getting everything. So, and that's the way it worked out, but it's not too bad, it's a big help. That said, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the grant funding from the Sidewalk Capital Fund, Capital Reserve Fund for the Centennial Path as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion from the board?
Two seconds.
That's right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye. Any opposed? Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and staff, for doing the grant. Okay, next we have the consent agenda, it's in our packet.
First item on the consent agenda is the minutes from the November 13th, 2019 meeting, the October 2019 month report, one budget transfer and several budget amendments. Budget transfer is monies are moved between department programs. The managers allowed, permitted to approve them, but they must be reported at the next Board of Commissioners meeting. The first, the one there, number three, was to transfer from other improvements to maintenance and repair for the LED townwide lighting project. This doesn't meet the capitalization threshold for individual LED light replacements. The budget, three budget amendments, number 11, this is for funds for portion of the townwide LED lighting program that is a project that's eligible for a rebate from Dominion Energy. Number 12, is to appropriate funds for salaries. Number 13, with the upcoming road improvements being done here around the town complex, the Town Hall Drive, it seemed a reasonable time to resurface and restrike parking lot to our west as a part of that project. It's obviously not street improvements, it will be buildings and repairs, others, other items, but I'd like to request approximately $20,000 to be appropriated for that purpose so that we can piggyback that on the street improvements project. And with that, staff, we recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Skip was trying to get something in there.
Trying to sneak something in there.
I can retract that second.
There's a motion and seconds. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great.
I would like to add one thing on, when we get our monthly report amongst a lot of other information, which is good information, it's all consolidated onto this whole thing right here. It's one page, and if there's ever any question that anybody has about the budget, and I know sometimes people do, myself included, this is very comprehensive and it's laid out in such a way that even I can understand it. So, and it's available for anybody that ever wants to see it and see where we are month, year-to-date, and where we are compared to last year. So if you ever want to see that, all you have to do is ask. Me, we online, isn't it?
It's for the pets, what they have.
It is, okay, yeah, it's online, you can find it on our website, so I always take a close look at that, so just in case you're ever interested in what's going on with the budget.
Okay, well, basically, we're to move into what most of you are here for this evening, which is new business. Before we do that, I have something that I'd like to share to read. I don't know if anyone else has any comments that they want to make before we turn it over to Michael. Okay. Mind if I read something? Okay. So bear with me. A lot has happened in the last eight years. I went from having toddlers ages one and a half to three and a half the night I was sworn in, to now, my last night in office, watching my middle schooler, my third grader, head out the door to a basketball game. It seems to me as though when you're a parent, the speed of time changes, it accelerates. As I sat in the office of my day job today, thinking about the last eight years with the town, the same sense of rapid time advancement struck me. The town of Kettle Hill Hills has seen a number of changes and improvements in the last eight years. Meetings started to be recorded and televised, the town joined Facebook, trash attack was reestablished, the ice cream social was brought back, annual national night outs have been hosted. The Community Apairance Commission was created and continues to lead wonderful initiatives, including the Community Apairance Awards, trash attack poster contest, and the Kick Buds campaign. The Kettle Hill's Neighborhood Watch was created. Sue and Eddie Goodrich gifted the town with a little red mailbox installed at the Glenmore Beach Access. Numerous historic cottages have been designated as historic landmarks in the town, and an annual tour is hosted showcasing these homes. The path around the Frog Pond at Aviation Park has become a special place to recognize community causes and initiatives with spectacular light displays. Aviation Park also became the host site for OBX Entertainment's annual Outer Banks Halloween Parade. Beach nourishment occurred. The multi-use path along Bay Drive was completed. Sidewalks along the bypass were constructed and connected. The new public works facility was constructed. Numerous stormwater management and street improvement projects have been completed. The lights at the skate park were installed. I thought about that tonight as I was walking in and saw the skaters out there, that a couple of years ago, that couldn't happen. The Baumtrack Study Committee was created and the KCR Logan Disc Off Course was opened. The first fully handicap accessible beach access in the Outer Banks, honoring former Commissioner William Bill Pitt, was opened at Ocean Bay Boulevard Beach Access. Paus Park, our state-of-the-art dog park, was opened, and the new water tower placement is underway. This list is in no way all-encompassing of the last eight years in Kettle Hill Hills, however, it highlights accomplishments and advancements in our town. I share this list not in the spirit of self-accolade, but in the vein of highlighting what can be accomplished when you have talented, caring, and dedicated people working together. The items referenced, excuse me, referenced in the list reflect the work of our incredible town staff, our community volunteers, and the board. I cannot stress enough how fortunate KDH is to have this, excuse me, how fortunate KDH is to have the staff team we do. They are professional, knowledgeable, dedicated, and serve KDH with heart and pride. We have countless remarkable physical amenities in the town of Kettle Hill Hills. However, what really makes our town a tremendous place to live, work, and play are the people who share their time, talents, and treasure. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve KDH for the last eight years, and I am incredibly grateful for this opportunity. I'm really excited about the new board, and I know that you guys will accomplish great things together. So, thank you.
I just want to say, I didn't prepare anything, but I have thoroughly enjoyed working on the board with Skip and with you and with Mike and with John. And, you know, I don't think that I probably could have imagined how harmonious and how, you know, just great a group this is, because each one of us brought our own little unique thoughts and visions in. And Mayor, I don't believe I've ever experienced anybody that has been more easy-handed in making sure that each person who sits on this board has time to make their input known. You know, I really have a lot of respect for you, and I think that you've done a great job. I'm sure that the time I wasn't here, you were doing a great job then as well. But I have a lot of respect for you and for Mike and for Skip, and, you know, we're gonna continue to move forward in a fluid, positive way. So thank y'all very much for your service, I've enjoyed it.
Thank you. Likewise.
Second motion.
Second motion.
You have it in the record.
I would just like to, I've enjoyed tremendously having this opportunity to serve and give the name to everybody on this board, and Brandy too. Brandy contributed a lot in her time on our board. But Mayor Davies, I just wanted to thank you. One thing I've always appreciated is how efficiently and professionally you conducted our meetings. Everybody gets a fair chance to be heard, say what they have to say, but people's time is respected, and things happen in a very professional way. I admire that, and thank you for it.
Yeah, I think, when you, Terry, you mentioned the harmony. That's the thing that has stuck out to me the most, going back to Travis Appelman and Brandy, and of course, Michael Midget. We had a great group. We have a great group now. I'm going to have one that's sitting up here. The camaraderie and the harmony that we've experienced, and the efficiency of the meetings, and everybody getting a chance to say what they want, and it comes down from the top. And I'm so thankful to have, you know.
And that one meeting that you chaired.
I used to get away. I'm so privileged to have sat beside you three here.
All right, we'll get the show on the road now. So, the next item of business is new business, which is going to be the certification of the election results, and then swearing in our new elected officials. And I'm going to turn that over to our deputy clerk. Michael Liddell's going to run that session, or segment of the agenda. I will share that after the new officials are sworn in, we will take a brief pause from the agenda and have a little reception.
If, if the new mayor approves, right?
So, we can actually.
Mayor Commissioners, this is to certify the November fifth, twenty nineteen municipal election results by precinct for the town of Kedle Hills for a mayor with eight hundred and nine votes. Eight hundred and nine total votes. It's Ben Sprout. If Mayor Lex Sprout will come to the front, we'll have a swearing-in.
Alex, go forward.
Can't bring anyone to crawl.
Put your left hand there, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, and state your name.
I, Ben Sprout.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As mayor of the town of Kedle Hill.
As mayor of the town of Kedle Hill.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God. Congratulations. Certified elections from the November fifth, twenty nineteen municipal election result by precinct for Kedle Hills Commissioner Ivy Ingram, seven hundred and seventy-six votes. B.J. McAvoy, seven hundred and sixty-nine votes. Bernard B.
B.J.
If you will please come forward.
You're the X?
Oh, look at that.
You're the X?
We'll take the oath together. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Bernard McAvoy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As commissioner of the town of Kedle Hill.
As commissioner of the town of Kedle Hill.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So, let's have cake.
I could actually use this thing? All right, please, come to order. I'm going to get up and come around the front here. Big shoes to fill. No idea how to fill. But we have a few gifts from the town for our outgoing mayor, mayor pro temp, and commissioner, so if they could come up here real quick. One more little. There's no way to encapsulate, but it has meant to have you as our mayor for all these years. Say that the phrase "big shoes" has been floating around in my head for quite a while. It's an understatement. So, a small token from the town. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Temp, my dear neighbor down the street, who wrote me in so many years ago to the planning board, and got all this stuff started. Thank you so much. A small token.
Thank you.
I think.
We'll get him some.
Open it.
It's all fireworks and.
Well, so, before, and then I will not say anything else tonight, but before I part, so you know how there's like a book of secrets sometimes that's passed from one office to the next? So, this is a special book of secrets. It's not what you think.
Thank you so much. It's carefully hidden.
Okay, I was trying to just show Brandy what's in the bag, so let me do it. Oh, wow. That is incredible. Oh, nice. It's beautiful. Barbara, do you think that's amazing? Thank you all very much.
All right, item two, new business.
Let's go back to item one.
Item one, organizational item there.
Yes, that's the mayor pro temp.
Yes. So, Mayor, I would make a motion if you're ready to entertain that.
I am.
I'd nominate Ivy, the mayor pro temp.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, nomination. Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second that.
Right, any, any discussion on our mayor pro temp? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carrie, as unanimously. Now you can hear me. There we go. Could have that on. Congratulations.
Now we need to square in the mayor pro temp.
I state your name.
I, Ivy Ingram.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Of the state of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro temp.
As mayor pro temp.
Of the town of Kedle Hill.
Of the town of Kedle Hill.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
And ability.
And ability.
According to the law.
According to the law.
So help me.
His next item of new business is the, there we go, adoption of the Code of Ethics and Conduct for the Board of Commissioners. That was in your packet. There are a number of pages in there. I assume everyone has looked over them. Is there any discussion before we look for a motion? Ready for a motion when you are.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the Code of Ethics and Conduct for the Board of Commissioners as presented.
All right, there's a motion.
A second motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. And that passes unanimously. Keep us straight. And moving right along, the next item of new business is the nomination for appointment to the Derrick County Tourism Board. This is a two-year term. It's actually appointed by the county commissioners. We are instructed just to send three names to them in the order of our preference, and they usually pick the first one, but sometimes they don't. I've talked to everybody individually. No one is champing at the bit, so just a little discussion to see who we put on the list and in what order. So, I know that, Terry, we discussed that your work schedule would have you probably miss some of those meetings. So, that, that kind of puts you towards the end of the list. I know that is sort of true for my job as well. Big, long daytime meetings are a little tougher for me. So, really, it's the other three of you, and really, which order we want to put you on the list.
Well, for me, at least, in my responsibilities as attorney during the day, I probably would be last of the three. Then she'd list, you have to list three anyway, so.
John, how's your schedule? I don't know.
I have some flexibility. It's one of those things, if you don't want to go dwell too many times before it dries up. But I, I'm happy to serve in this capacity. Town needs to do so. How are you feeling about it?
I could do so as well. That, I mean, that's something I can, next month.
Next month, okay. All right, well, I guess, giving the mayor pro temp some responsibilities right off the bat, probably wouldn't be a bad idea. So, why don't we go one, two, three? And they have to fill out some paperwork after the meeting, I believe, and we can send it in by the fifteenth. Is that right?
Yes, it's attached to the memo.
Yep. Oh, yeah, so you guys have it there. So, just take a couple of minutes to fill that out right before we leave, and make sure they've got it. All right, so, next up is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
Mayor, the only comment that I have on the committee report is the West Side Recreation Group. We did have a meeting, and we had some very good results that came in from our survey, some positive comments. We looked at Aviation Park. It seemed that the consensus was that we were probably going to do a lot of in-house enhancements there. We decided that we're going to make actually our formal report to the board in January, and we'll move ahead then. The shining star in this whole thing, to me at least, is we're going to have some very, very interesting stuff come up with meetings. It's going to be phenomenal, and I think it's going to be a very nice project. Anything you want to add, Cameron?
No, our next meeting is the twen, what is it?
Thirteenth, wasn't it?
I was trying to fix the schedule.
I don't have my agenda with me, but I think it's.
Thirteenth.
Yeah, I think it's the thirteenth of January, six o'clock here in this town also.
Open to the public, if you'd like to have some input into what the West Side Recreation Group is talking about. They make recommendations to the board about improvements to various parks. We're also looking at Hayman, too.
Yep, yep. Hayman's, Hayman's in the, in the mix, and some good stuff, good chance for people to have some input. We appreciate it.
And the number of years since some of those places have been updated, we're really excited about being able to spruce them up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Is that, is that January thirteenth?
It's the second Tuesday. I mean, second Monday.
That's the Board of Commissioners. What time do you need it?
Michael, what do we have on our calendar?
We originally scheduled it before the board was considering its schedule, so we were looking at adjusting it. It was at the same time.
We'll get together in a sec. Yeah. We didn't have anything on the calendar at that time.
If you're not already on the sunshine list, I recommend you call over and make sure you get your email on there. That, that way you'll stamp on all the dates, especially if they change in the last minute. Also, watch my Facebook page. I'll try to keep you up to date. Try to get the word out there. Any more committee reports?
Yes, I'd like to, like Sue Kelly, to address us on all the work that the Community Apairs Commission is doing.
Hi again. I'm Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, speaking on behalf of the Community Apairance Commission. Congratulations. Thank you, John. The next meeting of the Community Apairance Commission is Thursday, January twenty-third, at eight-thirty in the morning in this room, and all are welcome to attend and to bring ideas to us. The Kick Butt Subcommittee will have a meeting set at that meeting, and not only can people attend that, but they can actually participate on that. It does not require an appointment by the Board of Commissioners to participate on the committee that's working on our anti-cigarette butt campaign. And it's very exciting. We just ordered a thousand more of these stickers, which means we have given out pretty much the first thousand. And we also have these bags smarter. I didn't bring very many of these tonight, but there are some of these, and a few of these on your chairs. Would love to see more of them on the back of people's cars or other visible places. And lastly, our next participation is Saturday at Santa Claus. And if you've never been to that, it's a lot of fun. The kids are so sweet and cute, and it's such a pleasant thing. And I hope they'll have the tram that rides around Frog Pond to see all the lights. That would happen last year. But Stacy Hilsman, who's the new director of Neighborhood Watch, she and I will be sharing a table on Saturday, the fourteenth. Four-thirty to six-thirty is the time for Santa coming to KDH. A lot of fun. Hope we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thanks, as always, for all you do, and the committee does keep our community beautiful. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any more committee reports?
The next meeting of the Community Appearance Commission is Thursday, January 23rd, at 8:30 in the morning in this room. And all are welcome to attend and to bring ideas to us. The Kickbutts Subcommittee will have a meeting set at that meeting. And not only can people attend that, but they can actually participate on that. It does not require an appointment by the Board of Commissioners to participate on the committee that's working on our anti-cigarette butt campaign. And it's very exciting. We just ordered a thousand more of these stickers, which means we have given out pretty much the first thousand. And we also have these Bag Smarter. I didn't bring very many of these tonight, but there are some of these and a few of these on your chairs. Would love to see more of them on the back of people's cars or other visible places. And lastly, our next participation is Saturday at Santa Claus. And if you've never been to that, it's a lot of fun. The kids are so sweet and cute, and it's such a pleasant thing. And I hope they'll have the tram that rides around Frog Pond to see all the lights. That would happen last year. But Stacy Hilsman, who's the new director of Neighborhood Watch, she and I will be sharing a table on Saturday, the 14th. 4:30 to 6:30 is the time for Santa coming to KTH. A lot of fun, hope we'll see you there. Thank you.
Thanks, as always, for all you do, and the committee does keep our community beautiful. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any more committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Commissioner's Agenda. Start at the far end, do you have anything to say?
The... The only thing I would say was, I experienced some pleasant news today from our water department. I wasn't aware of this. We have an alarm system on our meters. That if you use a certain amount of water within a specific period of time, it tells them, hey, something's not right. I just think that, I couldn't get over it, I told my wife, I said, I really can't believe that the town has gone to this extra lengths to look out for the citizens. That was a very nice feature. Now I've got to find the link, but I was impressed with that. It's another way that the town looks out for you.
Yes, they've saved me a couple of times. Two different properties. It's nice to find out about it. They do it once a month, which is a lot better than finding out 90 days later. Which is how it used to be. So that is great. They have to do, you have to come to each meter, but as soon as they download the data in the meter, you get that alarm and you can do something about it.
It was me. Yep, that's all I had to say.
Vijay?
Well, I just, on the record, I also, I think it'd be remiss as well to not thank Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Hogan for his eight years, and of course, Mayor Davies. You know, you're inspirational, Sheila, and we do, you know, appreciate all the work you've done as a citizen. And it's what inspired me to run and want to keep that trajectory that you've put the town, the path that you've set forth, I want to follow that. And I'm excited to be a part of it. And I also want to publicly thank, on the record, all my family, friends, and citizens that voted for me for Commissioner and to take this seat. Certainly, I hope to make you proud and appreciate that. And also, we had a great facilities tour on Friday. Michael led that. It was a good day, we spent the whole day touring all KTH facilities, all the departments. And the good news is, you're certainly in great hands here. Employees of the town are excellent, and they are very proud and very, very professional. So I was super impressed with everybody that I met that day, and I appreciate that tour, Michael.
Everybody should have seen in their packet on their Commissioner's Agenda, a resolution for us to renew our commitment to opposition, continued opposition of offshore oil drilling and exploration since we are a new board. I would kind of dislike that, there was a precedent we set two years ago. I like one of our very first actions being to renew this commitment. So Killabell Hills, we keep, Killabell Hills stays, of course. So...
Excellent idea.
Any discussion around this?
If that's a motion, it's nice that in Killabell Hills, I'm allowed to actually second that.
All right, I'll make that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously, thank you for that. It's really great to be on that side of that issue. It's near and dear to all of our hearts to keep pressing in that direction. Ivy?
I think I'll just echo Vijay. I was gonna, the facilities tour and the staff was top-notch. I mean, from the planning department to the fire to the police, it was water, it was incredible. Everyone, I mean, this is, you really do see why Killabell Hills runs smoothly, because their people are the best of the best. And, you know, thank you to the administration, Michael was seamless and was great. Worked a lot, met a lot of people, it was wonderful.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'd like to reiterate what these two have said, which were fantastic. The shoes to fill big. Sheila, thank you so much for all you've done for the community, and thanks for getting me involved and pushing me in this direction. I hope that I can do the job justice and hold the candle to all that you've accomplished in the last eight years. And I'm really excited about the board, we've got a great rapport already. And like you said, we saw how many wonderful employees we have, great leadership in the back here, and some employees that have been working with us since, what, 42 years?
Forty-two, forty-three years.
Forty-two, forty-three years. We met a guy in the water department who's been here since 1978, when he graduated from high school. He has some stories about some secret fishing holes, I'll tell you that. So, yeah, there aren't enough words to express how much we appreciate the outgoing commissioners and mayor pro temp and mayor. Thanks for all you're doing, good luck on the next chapter, here's to seeing your kids' ballgames every time. Moving on, after the mayor's agenda, is the town manager's agenda. Oh, what's that? No, that wasn't it. Oh, wait, sorry, what did I miss?
You have two items.
Two items of my own. I have some, that's right, sorry about that. So, the first memorandum is a resolution about the 2020 census partnership. This, of course, the centennial, the... The census is coming up, and that's mandated by the US Constitution. We join communities across the nation that help them do that work. The results of that will have a lot to do with how federal funding goes around the nation and locally. So we are excited to get involved in that. So I recommend approval of this resolution and a motion would be in order for its adoption. This is the... See the motion here?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion on that resolution? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Passes unanimously. The next item is the proposed 2020 calendar. Yes, I knew something important was coming up. That's right, the calendar. So, we'll just jump right in. We're looking at setting the dates for all of our meetings coming up. I guess you can see them up there on the screen. One of the things that we discussed prior to this meeting was with new board members and different commitments. Some of us have a little trouble getting here at 5:30, and so far, I had not heard too much pushback on moving it to 6:00 PM. If there's anybody that has an issue with that, please let us know now, otherwise, I think we might move in that direction. How you guys feel?
Six to five. Six works.
All right. Helps with some of the community.
There's a rush.
There's a little rush getting out some stuff. All right, so if we're in agreement with these dates, somebody said something about dates, date issues?
I have a couple of date issues. One is a pre-planned vacation on June 24th. But, you know, there may be no way around that if you're having two meetings in June. And then I had a question on February 10th to see if anybody would be amenable to February 12th, Wednesday. But if not, I mean, there may be a reason not. So, to see about those two dates. Other than that, those dates are good for me.
I can do February 12th. Works for me. Staff, how are we doing on the 12th? Anything else going on in this room? All right, let's... So February 12th, make that adjustment. How about the 24th? Could do the following week, wouldn't be too close to July 25th.
Or the 22nd.
Or the 22nd, the Monday. When, how, when are you going?
I'm at the whole week, so, but...
So...
If not possible, yes.
So the next Wednesday is July 1st. That's still two weeks before the next meeting, so...
It would actually need to be, if you're going to have the second meeting in June, it would need to be in June.
It has to be in June, yes, that's right. So we could do the 29th of June. Will you be back by the 29th?
Yes, oh yes.
How's everybody else looking? So we'll change the 24th, June 24th to June 29th? All right, any other ones?
Mayor, one more for us to look at is Monday, April 13th. It's spring break. It's Easter Monday, so it's spring break. I don't think four, five of us have kids at school. I'm wondering, and staff, I'm wondering if other people might be out of town for that date as well. So maybe considering a week before, possible.
Oh yeah, we could certainly do that. Do you want to look at the 6th?
I think that's better, I agree.
Good call out.
Good catch. All right, so we have three adjustments. Michael, you have all those?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anything else before we look for a motion? All right. If we're all in agreement, a motion to adopt the 2020 meeting schedule and the change of meeting time is what we're looking for.
I'll make a motion to adopt the 2020 calendar.
With the...
With the changes.
Changes and the time, yep. All right, motion on the floor, is there a second? Second from, I don't know, over there. Terry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry unanimously. All right, so that's that. The next item, following along, is about the joint work session on large, single-family dwellings. As you know, this has been discussed many, many times, over many, many years. And at the meeting on November 13th, there was some discussion of putting together a joint work session. The date for consideration for that is January 22nd at our regular meeting. And then staff is asking us to see if there was any specific things we'd like them to look into going towards that. First, how's the date, let's talk about that first. That worked for everybody? And then I have gigantic stacks of information about this issue. So I'm not coming up with specific things that I need to know. Do you have any, does anybody else have any things they'd like to hear from staff?
Well, not for me necessarily, but for maybe for clarification purposes. I would possibly like to see information on how our situation here in this town differs from my neighboring towns.
That's a good point.
And that could help clarify, you know, when people say, well, this town is this, that and that. You know, at least we can talk educated, in an educated way about how our town is different from our neighbors. And, you know, and there's hurdles that we have that they don't, and vice versa. But, so that would be helpful to me.
In that direction, we could also look at communities in other parts of the state. And maybe, we don't want to reinvent any wheels if we don't have to. Maybe there are some other ideas we can cast about for, from some other communities in North Carolina and perhaps elsewhere. Really, it's really about...
And if I could ask one more thing, this is based on a conversation I had with folks, staff. But the information maybe as well, again, to educate everyone on the issue of non-conformity and how, if that is, if that truly is the case or not, that a, for instance, a parking ordinance, parking regulations on these large homes would affect, you know, non-conformity if a rebuild was necessary. You know, I want to clarify that so that there's no confusion that doesn't create that situation or not.
Those are really, really good ideas. Anybody else?
Since this joint work session will be part of our meeting, would there be any separate times before or after a work session for extra public comment? Because some people may want to immediately before or immediately after the work session, speak to what we've been discussing outside of the normal public comment periods. That was just one idea I had.
I think it's reasonable to say that we're not going to take action at that.
No, and I'm not saying, man, if somebody wanted to chime in or had anything to share, just a time set aside for them to do so, specific to this item. And another question I had is maybe researching if any other towns regionally or further away are able to find workable ways to incentivize extra safety features beyond what's required by state building code. Sprinkler systems come to mind first, or any other. How did, if any town been able to make that work? That's a big research request, and I apologize for dropping that on staff when not a lot of notice. But that's one recurring topic, and maybe to spend some time looking at it could be of value.
Also a good idea. I don't think we need to take any action on that, that's just a calendar item, right? So, any, one last chance, any further discussion? All right, we'll move on to the next memorandum. Which is a appreciation reception we have usually in the spring, early spring, to thank all of the folks that volunteer their time on our committees and appointed boards. Last few years, we've held that at a restaurant here in town. And these appointees represent all sorts of different parts of our town. So last year, we had it in February, Captain George's, are we looking for a date? Yes, please, all right, calendars again.
So last year was late February?
And that was just what worked.
That was what worked, oh, okay.
For the board last year, this is totally up to you, if you want to do it in January, February, March. We would just recommend before the season.
Sure, sure. February is good for me, but...
And it looks good on the calendar, too.
It's not too tight.
Right, it's not too tight with the other meetings.
Didn't you just have the one board commissioners meeting in February, early voting?
That's the 12th, the rest of the month is pretty wide open. So, do you usually do it on a particular day of week, weekday usually?
It is a weekday, it's a Wednesday. Wednesdays?
I'm thinking the 26th, my jump's out to be 26th.
Ash works.
Is that an issue for you? That's another one, if you think it's...
Yeah, because March 4th is also good for me.
We have a meeting on March 9th. I'm free on March 4th, how's everybody else doing?
That works for me, too.
March 4th it is, all right. If I haven't buried a piece of paper up here, that should be the mayor's agenda.
Yes, sir.
So, after the mayor's agenda is the town manager's agenda.
I would just like to announce this evening that the assistant town manager, Sean Murphy, is officially a grandfather as... Saturday? Yes, Saturday, December the 7th. He and his wife Lisa have a little boy. His name is Donovan Sutton Murphy. And mommy is, and maybe are doing well. And that's all, Mayor.
Attorney's Agenda is next.
Mayor Sproul, Mayor Pro temp, welcome. Congratulations for working with you guys. Commissioner, boy, it's nice to be on the same side for a little bit. Enjoy this more. Been seeing what it's like, that meeting after our court appearance, that morning. We'll see how that meeting goes. That's all.
Thank you. As our meetings generally go, we have a second public comment period here at the end for anyone in the public to make a comment. I don't believe we have anybody signed up, but if you'd like to come up and speak, you heard the rules earlier, three minutes, five minutes with the group. If you'd like to approach, you may now. No pressure. Okay, seeing no one for public comment, we will close the public comment. And since there's nothing to respond to... And since there's nothing to respond to, we'll have you respond. The last item on the agenda is to adjourn. Does anybody else have anything before we adjourn? All right, thank you so much to everybody. Really great to see my friends out there. Thanks for hanging out the whole way.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll say, oh, yeah, make a motion. Then we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about me running on at the bell? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? We adjourned, thank you.